I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the meeting's been called to order, and first up is public comment. I don't have any notes for that. There being none, we're going to go to our department comment update. I don't have any notes on that. Good, okay. So, under discussion and possible vote, we have actually 10 items. We will first start with a request from Memorial from John Gray of Nichols Way. Next, number two is a request to change the hours of operation of the dog park. Three is a National Grid project to install a low-pressure relief valve in parking. Four is a summer recreation program review. Five is to approve the warrant for the November 5th state election. Six, the FY25 town administrator goals. Seven, set a deadline for the select board members to complete the FY24 town administrator evaluation. I have an extra copy of it if someone needs it. Eight is FY25 select board goals. Nine, townwide project list. And 10 is a Merrimack Select Board letter to the governor regarding cuts to transportation. So, we'll start with number one, which is a request from Memorial and Town from our resident, John Gray of One Nichols Way. Welcome.
Thank you, Select Board, for having me here tonight. Basically, real simply, we'd like to family Marsha Twombly Gray and John Jack Lewis Gray, my parents, who passed away in the year 2022. Our family, mostly the grandchildren, would like to do something, create a park bench memorial down at the pines, if possible, and made out of granite. And we'd pay for the cost of the bench and have a simple inscription "In the memory of John Marsha Twombly Gray and John Jack Lewis Gray," from the year 1929 to the year 2022. They lived in the 1920s to the 2020s, so almost 100 years. And that's basically it. We want to donate that to the town and not looking for any kind of recognition or anything. Just would like to... One quick thing, Mom, when she was getting into her 80s and her early 90s, we used to walk down the pines, down by the girls' softball field and the baseball field and down by the playground. We'd walk down to the end where the, the end of the road, so to speak, and she'd get tired. And she was in her late 80s and 90s. She goes, "I wish I had a place to sit." So, you know, again, I don't know where, but I figured the selectmen could come up with a place where they'd want the bench to be. And my dad also worked in the pines years ago as a police officer from the 1950s and 1960s, working in the pits with Phil Bevallack, who was a former late selectman at Groveland here. And they used to break up fights with the race car drivers. They'd have their heated exchange at the finish line. They'd carry their little skirmishes into the pits. My father, Mr. Bevallack, would have to break them up. And I could tell you more stories, but that's probably enough for now. You've got other people on the agenda. But again, that's... We're looking sometime in March. My parents' anniversary was in March 22nd. And after my dad was very sick, they observed their 70th wedding anniversary. And a few days later, my dad went to heaven. And then that was in April. And then a few months later, in September, my mom went to heaven. So, you know, they were close. And the four grandchildren, Zachary Staples, William Staples up in Maine, and Rose Moore Gray in Hampshire, and Jack Gray in Connecticut, the four grandchildren would like to pay for this. So, they're going to, the grandkids are stepping up to do this. And so, that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, I don't have any questions, but I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Yes.
I just, maybe we can coordinate with the Highway Department, just so that way, when it's done, we can put it in a place where it's not going to affect the mowing and stuff like that.
Or plowing or whatever?
Yeah, just so it doesn't get destroyed.
All right, great.
Just for wherever you want to put it, just communicate with them, I think, would probably be a good idea.
I know when people go snowshoeing in the wintertime, sometimes the snowshoers get a little tired, too, and the cross-country skiers and want a place to sit down. And you're right, if it's not where they plow in snow and...
Yeah, just don't want it to get ruined.
By the snowplow. But, yeah, all right.
Jason, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
And John also served in the Select Board and State Rep, right?
Yeah, a few other things, but that's...
Yes. During your term, I've heard of the parades that we had that I missed, but I heard they were quite good, so.
Well, one quick thing about the impetus for this, it was the four grandchildren, but actually, it was two schoolteachers. Maria Papuan O'Gray, my parents' daughter-in-law, who's taught for the Bagnell School for over 30 years and retired in 2019. My sister Susan Staples, Susan Gray Staples, who taught up in the Gray New Gloucester School District in Maine for over 30 years and retired in 2015. And it was their impetus to do something for Grammy and Bumpy to the grandchildren. And the grandchildren are going to come up with the money to pay for this. And we will pay for any maintenance in the future. Hopefully, the granite bench will last a while.
Last a long time.
And, you know, so hopefully, give ideas to others in town. Maybe they want to help with other benches, too.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion to move forward on this?
Yep. I'll make a motion that we allow the park bench to be installed down the Pines Recreation Area.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're doing that in coordination with the Highway Department and the Town Administrator. And thank you for coming in. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, John. You, too. Okay. Next on our agenda is a request to change the hours of the dog park at the Pines Recreation Area. This request comes from Mitch Mahoney of 222 Main Street. Hi, Mitch. I assume that's who you are? Great.
Yes. So, good evening, everyone on the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mitch Mahoney. I live across the street from the dog park on Main Street. First, I want to acknowledge the value this space provides for dog park owners and their, dog owners and their pets, sorry. I use the park myself a couple times a week and give my dog a chance to let out his energy, so I do appreciate what it offers to the community. However, I'd like to bring a concern to your attention that is affecting the quality of life for me and other nearby residents. Currently, the dog park opens as early as 6:00 a.m., and myself, and Dan can attest to this, my neighbor, we have both been woken up by dogs barking over there as early as 5:00 a.m. on occasion. This disruption is extremely challenging, particularly when we consider the town has a noise regulation in place for construction work, which cannot begin until 7:00 a.m. on weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on weekends. I've tried to take matters into my own hands and donated $400 to the town so that bushes will be installed in front of the park to help baffle the noise. The plants that were installed about a year and a half ago are about a foot tall, have not shown signs of growth, and have not done anything to help with this noise. So, that's why I'm here to ask for the help of the board. With all this in mind, I'd like to respectfully request that the dog park's opening hours be adjusted or that we come up with some solution that balances the needs for both park users and residents.
Thank you. If you wouldn't, could you stay where you are right now?
Yeah.
Thank you. Questions? Ed?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mark?
No questions.
Jason?
No, I don't have any questions.
Wow. So, we have no questions. I mean, I remember the discussion early, early on that, for some reason, some people wanted to leave it open early. So, people who are going off to work would come down to the park before they go to work. But myself, hearing from you about 6:00 a.m. dog barking, that would not be something that I would enjoy every morning if I didn't have to be up that early. So, I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
No.
The only other thing to remember is that Pines, as a whole, is open from dawn till dusk. And the whole reason why we placed the restrictions at 6:00 a.m. is because in the summertime, it's dawn at 4:30 in the morning.
I'd also like to put to mind that there is another dog park in the way back of the park, so if someone has restrictions...
Well, that's going to be a garden, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, just give us a minute. I guess, Jason, I hear you about that dawn to dusk, the park is open, but I think if somebody were down in the park making a lot of noise, we would hear about that at 6:00 a.m. in the morning. So, I guess I'm inclined to say I think 7:00 a.m. is not an unreasonable request. It's still early enough on the hot days that it's not, you know, too hot out yet if you're trying to get your dog out there to the park. And we're still open till 8:00 at night, so it's over 12 hours, which is a pretty good amount of time, I think. I mean, unless there's some other reason.
Yeah. Well, I can attest to the noise, too. I mean, I live on a side road across the street, and I can hear them early in the morning when I have my windows open. So, I feel your pain. But my question is, is who's going to enforce this? Are we just going to put a sign up and hope people obey by it? You know, I don't want to fine anybody, you know, for bringing their dog there, but if they're there early, like, who's going to...
Well, I mean, just like with, I mean, we've had complaints on construction, and I've read the emails back and forth, and the answer always seems to be to the resident, if you have a problem with noise in the morning, you're supposed to call the police department and let them know, and they'll tell you whether or not it's permissible. Town Administrator can certainly weigh in on it. Is that correct or not?
It depends. So, if there's a planning board decision and there's construction hours listed, most of the time, it will either be the police or the building commissioner inspector. In this particular case, it would most likely be the police department.
Right. So, I mean, as long as we give some time for the posting and for people to get the word around, so that people don't inadvertently go there. I mean, I think there'll be a transition time. I don't think it'll happen, like, overnight, because I think people come from all around to the park, from what I've heard, a few times I've been down there. But it's a lovely park. I mean, I think it's great that it's being used.
Yes. One of the largest groups it uses is the seniors around here that use it for social gathering because they have dogs.
That's nice.
And it's quite nice, but as Ed can attest, they can be in the earlier hours because they're used to getting up early.
I think 7:00 a.m. is still kind of early to have, you know, 10 dogs out or so. I mean, I don't think this request is unreasonable. Do you want to let this rest, this, let people watch our TV show, the hundreds that watch it, and see if anybody wants to come in and say, "No, keep it open at 6:00 a.m." I mean, I guess if there's a tremendous amount of pushback against changing the hours, I would certainly listen to the other side. But I don't see that this is unreasonable.
I mean, I think we should move forward with it, and then maybe we could even change it to 6:30 during the summer or something. I don't know. I mean, try to work out a fair thing. I mean...
Well, that's it. We're trying to be fair. We're trying to be fair. Balance, the balancing of everything. And, you know, Dog Park is incredible. It gets a lot of use. It's great. It's exactly what we wanted to have happen. And we don't want to create friction with the neighbors that are right next door to it, either. So, that's my reason for thinking that, okay, 7:00 a.m. 7:00 a.m. is not unreasonable. I won't say that I'm up at 7:00 a.m. in the summer, but most people are. So, would you, someone like to make a motion to change the operating hours?
Well, would you consider the, matching the construction hours of 7:00 a.m. during the week and then 8:00 a.m. on the weekends?
I think it's going to be tough enough to get everybody on board with the 7:00 a.m.
Okay, just one...
You know, I think if we start to get too complicated, we're going to end up with just the police getting a lot of phone calls, and I don't want this to unfairly burden them. If we could try the 7:00 a.m., because right now, it's 6:00 a.m. across the boards. Am I right? Okay. I would say keep it consistent and see what we can do about the trees that aren't growing too well.
Okay. I would, yeah, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
There is like a screen across the fence, right?
But that doesn't, that doesn't stop noise, right?
Well, it helps deflect it a little, but...
You think, that's not a, is that a noise?
From my house.
Well, no, I'm asking, is that, Jason, is that a noise buffer, that screening?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't think so. Okay. I think that foliage is good, but I also think that they, they want to have a clear view into the park from the road as well. So, I think we have to balance that. Am I right? Do you think it matters? I mean, we could put a noise fence up at some point if that's really what we needed, like they have on highways. But that's like a huge thing, right?
It's a little complicated because of the way that the park is structured. Technically, you had a big barrier, which was the sand that the town removed from the site, so...
We had a hill.
...opened up the area for that type of noise to travel from the river and forward and vice versa. So, I think it's a little bit more challenging when you talk about the noise barriers. It's not just like a wall that you would erect on top of the mound that would, that would shield out the noise. And I think it would also need to be discussed in a little bit more detail on, like you mentioned, obstructing the view into the park and out of the park.
Correct.
And how big that wall would be, and if it would really eliminate the noise by all too much in terms of the cost and things of that nature. It's definitely worth a discussion if the board would like to take that one up, but it wouldn't just be simple, like erecting a noise barrier.
Okay. So, for now, I recommend we just deal with the request before us. So, would you like to make a motion to change the hours?
I'll make a motion to change the dog park hours from 7:00 a.m., from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. and just sticking with 8:00 p.m. closing.
Right. That's what we are now, right, Jason?
Yeah, currently, yes.
Okay.
I thought we already had a motion on the floor.
I don't think we did. We had a recommendation.
Mark made a motion. I second it.
That was, I thought, on the bench.
That was what?
The bench. You know what? Just if you wouldn't, if you would, okay, if you could just second it again, just to make sure. I'm sorry, I mixed this up a little bit. All right. So, you're seconding the motion again? Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All in favor of moving the time from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.? Raise your hand in favor. Unopposed? Okay. Thank you. We'll change the hours. Thank you. Okay. So, moving along. National Grid project to install a low-pressure relief valve in parking at 452 Main Street.
Hey, good evening. My name is Diana Cuddy. I'm from National Grid 170 Southern, 170 Data Drive, Walton, Massachusetts. And we're here tonight to make a presentation on a pressure relief valve.
Excuse me, excuse me. Could you pause for one minute? There's something interfering in the audio in here. Okay, could we take the light to, Jason, can you grab the light switch over to, thank you, sir. I can hear you fine.
I believe this is coming from her end. I'm going to check again, just to be sure.
Thank you.
You guys ready to go out on the mic?
Okay.
Do you happen to have the TV on?
Yes, we have both. Well, oh, her, I'm sorry. I'm like, well...
Record.
That's not good.
Is that, is this better?
There's, there's a little bit of an echo.
Okay, let me leave here. Okay. How about, is this better?
I think it's better. If you could just speak slowly, and that way, we can make sure we understand what we're reviewing. Thank you.
My name is Diana Cuddy, National Grid Gas, 170 Data Drive, Walton, Massachusetts. And we're here tonight to make a presentation for the installation of a gas, gas pressure relief valve. Joining me is the engineer, Martin Afassou, who's a specialist in this type of gas piece of equipment, and he will make the presentation.
Thank you, guys, for having us. We really appreciate this opportunity. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Next slide, please. So, why is this relief valve important? So, after the 2018 Merrimack Valley gas incident, Mass, DPU and NTSB took several actions to improve pipeline safety. And one of the recommendations that they gave was to install overpressure protections for our low-pressure systems. And what we at National Grid have implemented are a few things that I'd like to talk about. And one of them is the relief valve program. In addition to that, we also installed, before that, we used to have in our vaults, just single runs, two regulators in our vaults. So, after the DPU recommendations, we installed, we added a third regulator to our vaults and then added a second run. So, basically, we have two runs now with redundant regulators. So, this relief valve program is one of the ways that we've, programs we've started to add protection to our gas systems. And we've been installing these since 2020. So far, we've installed about 19 of our LP systems, some in Low, Drake, Boston, and around Massachusetts. And we have a few that we are planning to install. Next slide, please. So, after our analysis, we decided to install one in Groveland. And the reason why we chose this location is because the relief valves need to be a certain distance within our regulator stations. And also, we try to install them, you know, away from the public so that they don't get messed with. So, if you look on Main Street, we have an LP, low-pressure, pipeline on Main Street, and our plan is to just tie it on Main Street and just install it somewhere on this property. We initially met with Colin Stokes, who is the superintendent for the water source of Groveland, and we explained our proposals to him, and basically, he didn't really have any concerns with us installing it there because it wouldn't really interfere with his daily activities there. Next slide, please. So, this is just to give you an overview. I believe we sent the plans to the town already. But this is just to give you an overview of what we intend to install. I don't know if it's clear enough for you to see, but we have, it just shows our LP system pipe on Main Street, and we're just tying in straight from Main Street to proposed location. It would be minimal excavation. It shouldn't really take too long. We're proposing like a month to complete installation. Yes. So, next slide, please. This is to just give you an example of how they look like. So, these are 12 by 10 prefabricated structures. We construct them off-site. So, what we usually do is just, we excavate for the tie-ins. We prepare the foundation for the structures, and then we just place them when we're ready. So, we just basically plan on doing majority of the work off-site so that we can spend as little as time as possible during construction. So, these are how they look like, very minimal 10 by 12 structures. Next slide, please. Yep. So, this is just to show you how we move them to location. It's just another way of, you know, just to present to you how we move them to the site. And next slide, please. Yep. And usually, we fence them. So, based on the town's recommendations, we can put the fence around them, but we prefer to put the fence around them so that, just to keep them secure. Next slide, please. Like I did, I stated before, so these structures are unmanned. So, once we set them, we leave them. But we do provide, or we do inspect them quarterly, three times a year, just to make sure that they're functioning properly and, you know, everything is, you know, working all right. And excavation-wise or construction-wise, it shouldn't take us more than one month to construct pending permitting. So, as soon as we get the go-ahead, we mobilize, and it shouldn't take us more than one month to finish. Next slide, please. So, in summary, the relief valve program is to enhance our gas network and also to address concerns by the DPU. Thank you. Any questions, please?
Questions? Jason?
Does we still have to go through all the permits through SAM?
We do have an...
Sorry, Martin, you can continue.
Oh, no, no, I was just going to say, we do have the notice of intent from the Conservation of Commission. We apply for that on the, I think, somewhere in July.
This is more a wash from National Grid. It was approved, Martin. Then, notice of intent was approved along with the street opening permit.
Thanks, Mo.
I have some questions for you. Can we get a copy of the DPU recommendations that you're trying to follow?
Yes. I can send that to you, yes, after this.
Right. We didn't get very much information to review in advance of tonight's meeting, so I would like to see the recommendations. And it says it's a pressure relief valve. Does that mean it sets, it will automatically open and relieve the pressure? So, or is that, is that a location that someone would have to get to in the event that we have another incident like happened over and over?
It, it's supposed to be automatic. So, in an event where, you know, a situation like Merrimack, it would open automatically. And we have kick cells or systems in there that should notify our gas control that... And we have kick cells or systems in there that should notify our gas control that had opened, and a National Grid rep would be there right away, as soon as possible.
So it would open automatically?
Automatically, yes.
Because you don't have any other stop gaps, gaps that would, that would make sure that the pressure didn't get that high? I would thought you already have those.
We do have, we have new systems to make sure that we don't get to that level, but it's just another layer of protection.
You also mentioned you're trying to keep this away from the public. How far away from the public are you trying to keep this?
Not public, I think it's dangerous to the public, but just so that, you know, usually some kids try to throw stones and, you know, just to, so that we don't have a lot of interruptions with it.
Because it's in close proximity to our newly opened walking trail. So if there was an incident at that site and people were on the walking trail, would there be a safety issue?
No, it's not a safety issue.
I think what Martin's trying to say is an attractive nuisance type of thing when something like this exists, so just to keep it away from the general public's eye.
Okay, so you want to, it's in view of the public eye in Groveland. I mean, we're a small town. It's right by the walking trail and by, there's houses right around there.
Right.
So I guess I'd like to have a little more information about this, myself personally, and speaking for myself, because I do distinctly remember the incident that happened with the gas pressure. And I just want to make sure we understand what this gas relief pressure valve is in our town, and if there's any risks associated with us having it in our town. I'd like to know a little more about that. So if I could get the DPU recommendations and any documents that you have that would discuss a little better what this valve is for. I mean, always, we saw the slideshow tonight for the first time. Myself, I saw it on the agenda, and I wasn't quite sure what you were talking about, but now that I understand it's supposed to release automatically without anybody there, I'd like to know a little bit more about it. I'll turn it over to Mark. Do you have any questions?
No, no. From the way I understand it, I would probably rather have that rather than the pipe exploding.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather have neither. I'd just like to know a little bit more about it, I guess.
I agree with that.
You know. Ed, do you have questions?
Yeah, a couple. Did, did I read that right? That building, the prefab building, that's a 15-ton building?
I'm going to let Martin answer that. They may have been a type, because I saw that too. I was like, wow, that's pretty heavy for such a small, under 20 square foot.
31,000-plus weight on the building. Does that building need a foundation, or is it going to be a slab?
No, it's, we would install a foundation for the building.
Or just on a slab?
No, it shows the foundation underneath it right there.
Yep.
You, you're pretty close to the wetlands there. Do you need conservation approval for that building? I would think so.
We do, and I believe we have it.
We did obtain it.
Oh, you'll obtain it.
Yes.
Now, if there's a blow-off, is there a, is there an alarm that it, that notifies somebody at a, at an office that that has been triggered?
I'm sorry, you kind of, you cut off a little bit there. Could you repeat it again, please?
And so it does ring. Where does it ring?
Oh, Sam, he's talking about the scator box and the control to the gas control.
Okay. And there's also an audible alarm at the, at the premises?
Yes, there is.
What decibel?
I think it just rings to our gas control.
Okay. All right.
I'm just...
That's all I got.
Thank you. I had one follow-up question. How many of these are you installing, and in what other towns are you doing it? Could you, if you would, just include that with all, don't, if you could document that and include that with the DPU recommendations and a copy of the slide presentation and any other informational documents that you might think that we would need? That would be great. So unless somebody wants to vote it through tonight, I would like...
Motion to table it?
Yeah, I would.
I have one other question.
Oh, Jason has a question. Go ahead.
I'm just curious if the valve has tripped, and where does the excess gas go?
It blows that atmosphere. But it doesn't, it doesn't blow and keep blowing, it just bursts and then closes.
It's a burst as long as the pressure stays up?
Yes, so it builds pressure, bursts, and then, once the pressure goes down, it kind of closes. We're not really expecting this to be like a regular or constant release. It's just to prevent incidents like Myrmec.
And this is our second pressure relief valve in the town.
So you already have another one in town that, what?
We had one installed last year.
I don't recall that coming before the board last year.
It must not have been on town property?
Okay, if you could send us documentation on that other site in Groveland as well, that would be helpful, along with wherever else you're planning to install these, and a description of when they release the pressure, what will we expect, other than just an alarm? Will there be heat involved? Smell of gas, I suppose? Just some more information, because we really haven't, don't have very much to look at tonight.
I think the water superintendent has an answer on the, with the location of the other one.
It's in the island. I know nothing about these, just to preface that, but that large pipe that comes out of the island, five other Achilles' house on Broad Street.
Broad Street and Seventh St., right on the triangle.
There's been a gas pit there forever, and now there's a new pipe that comes down this round. I assume that that's what that is.
And whose property is that?
I would assume that's town's, eh?
Well, right, because we haven't had you come before us, before. That's why we're sort of not that informed. So if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind, we'd like to table this until we get a little additional information, and we'll put it on the following agenda.
So how do we send the information? Do we send it to you direct, or?
To our town administrator, Rebecca Aldum, and she gets everything to us directly. Thank you. Any more questions?
No. So did you make the motion to table?
Not yet. I'll make a motion to table.
And I'll second it.
All in favor of tabling? It's unanimous. Thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Okay, back to our agenda. We're up to the summer recreation program review, and I know we have some detailed sheets. I see we have Melissa's here, and I know you sent information out as well. So does everybody had time to look through the information and become familiar with it?
So I did want to give some background, if I may.
Oh, of course, absolutely. Go right ahead.
So at the last meeting that we had, I had brought up to the select board that there were some concerns with the financial standing of the summer program, and that it might be a recommendation to move forward with discontinuing the program. I did the same with the finance board and during town administrator time, allowing them to understand that I had some reservations and asking for it to be an agenda item at their next meeting. So I also had an opportunity to go before the recreation committee at their last meeting and present them some information and to discuss some of the concerns that I had. So I did want to preface it by saying that the recommendation is not that we should not have a summer program. The recommendation is that we need to figure out a better way to go about the summer program, to explore other options such as a 501(c), or to take a break, reconsider how it could be structured, fee-structured, program-structured. I know Melissa Baker from the finance board had submitted some information as an individual to the select board to review. Had a lot of good information and a good starting point. I know that the recreation committee is also eager to be involved, so it could be a potential to discontinue for the upcoming year due to timing constraints, as well as some of the issues that we'll go through in a second. And then also have either the recreation committee or establish a working group that can go through some of these concerns and to establish a program and to help with the identification of a director to lead the program and allow it to be successful. So just a recap of what we had for our finances from 2018 to 2024. You'll see that we started to run in a deficit in the revolving fund in 2019, which was covered by a surplus in 2018, and then slowly, the deficit has stayed steady within the program. This last year, we ran the program at bare minimum, so essentially, there were no field trips, we had no transportation, the supplies were very limited. So you can see, it went from $45,000 for field trips on 2023, and then there was nothing for 2024. You'll see that the supplies went from $20,000 down to $1,600. So you'll see that there were some major program changes that the program had experienced in 2024. And a lot of that had to do, again, with the fact that the director at the, for 2023, had resigned from their position. So we had advertised the position once we had recognized that that person was not going to be returning, and we had a very, very hard time finding a qualified individual to take on the position. So we did not find a qualified individual until January, when the actual registration is set to open, or early registration, and it was a very quick turnaround for us to try and get things out. And I know that there was a lot of concern from parents about, is there going to be a program? Is there not going to be a program? You know, what's that going to look like? Why is it so different? And all of those questions came to light at that point in time. So for the 2024 summer season, you'll take a look at the screen. You'll see the number of weeks for the program, and then you'll see the number of registrants. So for the 2024 season, please note that there is a three-week minimum, so you have to sign up for three weeks in order to participate in the program. So of total, there were 117 that attended for 2024. In 2023, there were 224. So there was a major decline in the registrants that appeared for the 2024 season. And again, that is attributed to the fact that the program had dramatically changed, and some people were upset about the field trips, and other people were not, did not appeal to the programming that was being put in place. So of that, 26 of those registrants are non-Groveland residents, and 86 families were serviced by the program in 2024. For the director, the current structure that we have for the director is, well, we don't have a director, but the current structure that we had in place for the last few years is that the salary ranged from $35 to $40 per hour with varying hours. A lot of the workload varied based upon the program. So in January, you would set up active in our online database, so you'd set that up, and you'd have the certain amount of weeks that would be enrolled, and then you'd need to advertise that on Facebook and social media and the school websites and get that information out there. Then you would start to actually assemble the program, what each week would be, what theme it would be, whether or not you would have a magician, whether or not you would have water days. So you would start to kind of build the program, and that would happen through January up until May, and then you would start advertising for the counselor positions, and then you'd interview as necessary, and then you go through the whole process of training, so making sure the CPR certified and things of that nature. And then the program would run between either six to eight weeks, depending on the year, and you would have counselors who would start in June and work until August. But the director would work all throughout the summer, and they would oversee the program. And different directors have approached it different ways over the past few years. Some directors were onsite all the time, other directors were not really onsite and left a lot of the direct oversight to the assistant director. And more recently, we had a balance where the director would check in in the morning, in the afternoons, and in the evenings, since there was extended in programming that was offered, but wouldn't be there onsite for the full time. So their hours, unfortunately, do not fall under the seasonal exemption that is offered for, the same as for counselors, which means that they would be eligible for benefits and they would be eligible for unemployment, overtime, et cetera. It's been very difficult to find a qualified director due to many issues, as we see on the screen. So there's a seasonal nature, where while it's seasonal, it's kind of not seasonal at the same time. Specialized skills dealing with children, limited pay, $35 to $40 an hour. There's a lot of other private industries that would offer more. And it's a high responsibility dealing with parents and the feedback. Some parents were appreciative of programming, others are not. There's different needs and different accommodations for different individuals, so it can be very challenging to balance all of that, of those needs. So from a liability standpoint, that presents a lot of risks. So we have child safety. The town is essentially responsible for all of the registrants. That can present a lot of challenges in terms of making sure that there's proper supervision, that there's proper background checks. There's accidents and injuries, especially for field trips, and other types of medical types of issues that may arise, which is listed a little later. Staff conduct and misconduct. A lot of people are under the misconception that they are not town employees, but they are town employees when they work for the summer program, so that is a liability for the town. Financial liability, like we find ourselves in currently, the account is in a deficit, and therefore, it is ultimately the town's responsibility to close that deficit. And then, as listed before, discrimination and inclusion, making sure that we're offering reasonable accommodations to individuals when we have limited staffing or staffing that does not have the proper expertise to deal with some of the issues that some of the registrants may have or other types of employee, types of accommodations. So from the revolving fund standpoint, and why it becomes a little bit more challenging is that under the revolving fund, you're not allowed to deficit spend. So there is some misconfusion as to whether or not you could allow a revolving fund to go into a deficit if, at the end of the fiscal year, it was in a positive. And unfortunately, the way that the camp had functioned, or the program had functioned, is that when registration opens in January, it's in a positive, but when it ends in September, it's in a negative. But we don't close out the revolving account until June 30 of that fiscal year. So the account in every single year has always ended in the positive. After checking with our legal team as well as auditors, that is not allowed. We are not allowed to have a deficit in the revolving account, and therefore, at the upcoming town meeting, we will need to identify reserve funds in order to allow that deficit to come back to the zero. So the whole point about revolving funds is it's supposed to be self-sustaining, so they're only supposed to be utilized for the operation and salaries. That also means that the revolving fund needs to take into consideration the benefits and things that we were just talking about as well for the director. The revolving account needs to take into consideration other types of expenses, such as insurance, additional insurance, if they have a bouncy slide or one of the water slides and things of that nature. So it's something that needs to be addressed by the town from a revolving fund nature in order to bring us into compliance.
Can I just ask to clarify on that? I kind of understand, I think, why. So basically, when they take in the money in January, though, we're closing our fiscal year, June 30th. So that money is in the revolving account?
It's in the revolving fund because you're not closing out the fiscal year until June 30.
Okay. And then they go through the summer and they spend the money?
Exactly, on payroll, field trips, operation, and by September, they're in the negative.
Right. But then, we go back to January, and we collect for the next summer?
And it replenishes. So once the mistake was found that we were not able to deficit spend, that is why I brought the issue forward to both the select board and the finance board as a financial issue that we need to address. And there appear to be some structural program issues that appear to have had that deficit start to grow. And the last year that it didn't grow was because there were major programmatic changes. So that does not mean that the program cannot be a success. If the town wanted to move forward, it could very much be a success. Like the data that Melissa and others have shared with the board, it does show that other communities are able it does show that other communities are able to make it work. But there needs to be major changes. And we do need to come into compliance with our municipal finance laws to make sure that we do so. So it's all about how we go about that. Do you want to try and push right now and try and find a director and see what will happen? My fear with that is that, as a parent myself, we start planning. I know it sounds early and ridiculous, but you start planning. So you need to figure out what camps you're applying for, how many weeks you're going to go here, how many weeks you're going to go there, if grandparents are going to watch cousins, et cetera. So that all takes into consideration the families that we are offering this amenity to and some of their anxiety about trying to figure out what's happening next. But we could certainly advertise the position and try and do that. Or the other option, like we said, was to discontinue the program just for the upcoming season and establish a working group or assign the Recreation Committee the opportunity to discuss programmatic changes, including fee structures, field trips, taking into consideration staffing, any of the liabilities or concerns that we just mentioned, and put something together for the Finance Board, include, excuse me, the Select Board, and move forward with potentially advertising the position and trying to find a qualified director. Or we could potentially take a look at trying to attract a 501(c) where they would take over all of the overhead, all of the liabilities, and they would provide a rent, if you will, to utilize the property for the program. But it is ultimately the decision of the Select Board. I'm just concerned financially with us being in a deficit and a lot of the other liabilities that come in with the program that are not taken into consideration and had not been taken into consideration with the funding. It doesn't take into consideration my time for HR issues, which is taxpayer dollars. It doesn't take into consideration your treasurer collector. It doesn't take into consideration your accountant. It doesn't take into consideration all of the other in-kind labor that's given to the program in order to operate. And then it exposes the taxpayer to a lot of the different liabilities in place that, again, could be avoided, but would require us to take some time and actually think about how we would best address those to make sure that it doesn't get to this point again.
What organizations out there would be the 501(c)? Is that like a YMCA kind of thing?
So there are other types of programs, like another program that we have here in Groveland, the Treetop, who utilizes VZ. They're a private 501(c). They have their, they take care of everything, and they pay rent to, or they pay a fee to utilize the VZ memorial property for the summer program. So there are structures out there that would support that. Not sure if that's the right way to go. I think it's just something to take into consideration. But if you want to have those conversations, I think you should. And I know that the Recreation Committee at their meeting had stated that they very much want to explore the potential of making sure that the camp continues. And how that looks, I think, is really up to the Select Board to determine exactly what steps they want to take.
My biggest concern is if you don't do it, and the kids go someplace else, and we do it the following year, are they coming back? You know what I mean?
And that was the other concern, too, with the registration dropping and the registration already dropping from 224 to 117 with a big chunk of those not being interested in the program. Have we already done that momentum? It's not all, but I totally agree with you. That's another concern. Have we already lost the draw? So do we really need to revamp to make sure that, you know, we can say, you will have field trips, you will have this, in order to bring them back? Or is it, you know, that's just something, I agree with you, is what I meant to say.
Right. I think, I think if I'm understanding this enrollment data correctly, Mark, I'm thinking that, like, initially, you had Jim Day, very popular. He's now the principal, but he was the gym teacher, very popular. He was in contact with students that wanted to go and with students who had been to Bagnell could be counselors. And then Castengway also worked in the district at one point. So he had contacts in the district as well. And that would have taken us through to 2023, is that right? Did he, or 2022? When did?
He was 2021, 2022, yes.
Okay. So it still went up in 2023?
Yes. There was a significant outreach and push from the assistant director, who became the director, to increase enrollment, and that was a registrant.
So the outreach is important.
Very much so. She attended Groveland Day. She did discounts for people who signed up early. She did an event over at the Bagnell. It was kind of like a fair, and you got to, like, win a week for free.
Oh, I don't know.
Passionate about getting people involved with the, with the program.
But we ran a deficit. I don't know that we can give away camp. I think we have to find a balance here. We're, we're not overburdening our regular staff. I mean, my, I would love to contract it out and not have us, have our staff have to be involved in any way except to check that they're staying within their financial bounds. But I don't know that we can pull that off this quickly. Because I have no, I mean, I don't have the time nor do I have the information to find a 501(c) that's going to walk in in October, November, and get going.
I mean, I feel like we should at least try it. Just, I know it's, and I hate giving you more stuff and aggravation because I know how many hours you work and everything. But I'm afraid if we don't do it, we're going to lose all the kids. Cedar Dale's closed now. I mean.
Right. Well, I think we have to, I don't think we can underprice and underpay and expect to be able to get somebody to run a camp for us who's skilled enough to do the outreach and the training. I mean, that's a lot of responsibility. So you have to be prepared to pay for that.
Oh, yeah.
So I guess the question is, can that be done? Can we take in enough money from the camp to hire? I'm not so much worried about the counselors as the person who's in charge being qualified enough to handle all this so that it's not spilling over into our town hall building.
And then another quick question is, like, we got a three-week minimum? Make it like a six-week minimum. Would that help, you know, make it a little bit more money?
You could try, but the issue is some parents don't want to send their children for six weeks. So if you say six weeks is a minimum, then they're just going to send their child somewhere else.
That's true.
I think going to a three-week minimum, when I was reviewing the survey data that was done back when Matt was the director, a lot of feedback was that the three-week minimum might deter people from joining because they didn't want to just do three weeks. They wanted to do one week here, another week somewhere else, et cetera. So that can be a double-edged sword. It could bring in revenue, but it could also do the reverse.
Yeah, okay. That's true.
I also think that we run into difficulties if we attempt to be more than just a camp. If we attempt to be an extended daycare.
There is extended day offered by both.
Yeah. And I think that that's difficult for a town to run that. And that means we're responsible for children that are still at that camp, the town is, unless we subcontract it out. It's on us. I mean, there is a reason why some camps have closed in recent years because there is a huge responsibility. But I don't, I don't want to give it up. I just feel like we have to pay better to hire the right kind of person. But I also think you have to, I think, like, they scaled back and didn't do the field trips. Maybe scale back the working hours so that it doesn't take an entire day for the director.
Does Wes Newberry have a program like this?
They do.
Like, could we just kind of look at what they offer and what they charge?
I did talk to them, and they are exploring merging or trying to figure out what they could do with the Penticet program that's over at the high school, middle school.
Right. You know, at Whittier, we used to do a middle school age thing, but I think we stopped because they couldn't get the people to work it. You know, I think the hard part is to make it, you're trying to find people who are seasonally available. That's the counselors. But you want to find an adult, you know, an adult with the right qualifications, seasonally available. You're going to have to pay for that. You're not going to get that for small pay. I think, if there's some way we can find out what the going rate is for a director of a camp.
We can do a salary study and figure that out. But again, the concern is the fact that you have a deficit in an account of $21,000 that you're going to need to use reserve fund for. That will put you at a zero. If you move forward with the program and it hits a snag and you're not able to get the registration, then the camp is going to need to stop payment. And you're not going to be able to allow deficit spending out of that account. So without proper programming in place, you're putting families at a disadvantage as well because if we can't process the warrant because the account will go into a deficit, then unless they make more money or bring in more money, then how can we allow them to continue to put the taxpayers at risk unless we have the program in place that we can show with estimates and numbers to support that? So again, it does not come back to the taxpayers as having to cover that. So that's the other concern.
So at this annual town meeting, we're going to, or are we doing a reserve fund transfer now?
We have to do it as part of this, well, as part of this annual town meeting.
Okay.
So it's like, it will be a fiscal year 24, I mean, excuse me, fiscal year 25 article, like we did prior years with a special town meeting. Although you can do those without a special town meeting. But it will be a fiscal year 25 article so that we can cover that deficit immediately. And so we will need to talk more with the Finance Board, as well as the Select Board, as to what reserve account do we want to put that to it? Do we want to utilize free cash? Do we want to utilize stabilization? If we use stabilization, there's a way that if the program becomes successful again, we could try and capture some of those reserves to go back into the deficit, potentially. But there are legal ramifications because, again, you're not using the revolving fund for the operation and salaries. You're using it to cover a deficit from years past. Is that legal? I have a question into council about that. But at the same time, it's just something to take into consideration of where you would take that money. But you would need to take it from a reserve account in order to fill.
Is there a possibility of us, for a bridge year, joining with Wes Newberry and doing something through Penticet to get us a bridge year so that we have more time? My concern is we, here, you know, dealing with this right now, it's basically beginning of October. Parents start planning their child's summer, December, November, December, January. They, they're booking all these things. And I don't know that we're going to have something, given the deficit that we have something. It's not like we can just turn over what we already have because it didn't work.
So the Penticet?
That's the problem. We can't just flip it over to a new person because we were either spending too much or we weren't charging enough or a combination of the two. That's what it boils down to.
So PRSD is planning on expanding their summer program. It's not an all-day program, though. They are looking to expand that, but they're currently evaluating what was offered this year and planning for next summer. So they'll have a final decision before the end of the calendar year. So we won't really know exactly how many more hours that program will be and whether or not it would be satisfactory. But in initial conversations, they do not want to, obviously, replicate our model in any way, shape, or form. They would like to continue on their path as they have seen success with what they've started to establish.
But would they allow, I didn't know that their programs allowed elementary school children to the, you're talking about the children going to the middle and high school campus?
So they have sports programming. So similar to the way our program started off.
Okay. And so it does go to, they do have younger groups of children? Okay. No, I thought they were just dealing with programming for the middle and high school children. I didn't know that they allowed the younger children.
So I can check in with Wes Newberry on what their plans are, but I'm not sure if they have. I mean, we can look at some of the data that was shared with you as to whether or not they have, you know, non-Groveland, non-Wes Newberry residents that are allowed. I'm not sure if they take out of town registrants.
I'm not meaning to send them to Wes Newberry. I'm meaning to.
But if they combine, so if they're already running their program the way they are, how would they combine with Groveland if they're running it out of Wes Newberry?
Oh, no, no. I was assuming they're going to run it out of Penticet.
Oh, okay. No, Wes Newberry runs it out of a different location. There's the Penticet Regional School District Summer Program. And then there's the Wes Newberry Town Program.
So they're still planning to run their town program?
Yes. Like I said, there was initial conversations looking to see whether or not there were other options because a lot of the same concerns we have with liabilities and the town time and revolving accounts and the liability to the taxpayer. But at the same time, their account is running in a positive. So they're doing just fine, and they have not taken any steps to move away from what they're doing. It was just initial conversations that were had when we talked about, could we do a tri-town type of summer program? So it's just conversation at that point in time.
Well, they might have a framework for what we should be thinking about doing if they're in the black, if they're not losing money. So it'd be good to see what they have. We can't, like I said, we can't just flip over what we've got right now because it's in the red. And we'd just be setting ourselves up for another problem, right?
Right. If you found somebody who is, who is capable, then it might be an option. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be, but it's just going to be time and a race against the clock, really.
What do you think, Jason? Any thoughts?
I think it's very challenging to run something with the oversight. I mean, in the past, the camp has never really had any oversight. It's just been allowed to run. And we don't have the staffing to provide the proper oversight, especially in today's day and age with the challenges that are brought to us in terms of inclusivity and just the overall liabilities of lawsuits that come about. I mean, most of our counselors are teenagers. And you don't see that a lot in well-established camps. I know that Beverly has a well-established camp, but they have an entire parks and recreation department that runs it, which is something that Groveland is too small to even think about having at this time. And I think that's where the biggest challenge is becoming, not necessarily the camp itself, but just the changes in the environments in which the camp is being run. It needs to have a lot more established and educated staff to be operating it properly to ensure that inappropriate things don't happen. Because that's where all the liability comes. And it's something that we see in today's day and age. That liability has skyrocketed. I mean, the lack of total oversight and control, I think, has led to some of the overspending that has been hidden by accepting the registrations or early registrations to cover it. And it's been going on since 2019. So that was before COVID. That was before any, anything else took place. So I think it's, I think it's obvious that unless we have a core group of people that are going to oversee it and ensure it functions properly, without those checks and balances, I don't think it's a liability that the town could really afford.
Well, it's not even a matter of affording. We're not allowed to do this. I mean, if we, once we clean this up, if we do it again, we could be under a little bit of supervision by the state. I mean, you, this is something that you're not allowed to do. So at this time, what, what's the, what does the board want to do with the information this evening? Do you need more information? Do you want to see Wes Newberry's camp and what they charge and what they pay? Do you want to see the Penticet information, if there is anything?
I'd like to see somehow, see if we can make the program work. It's been successful in the past. It's been very successful. The kids that have gone there always raved about it.
Yeah.
And something's happened since 2019 that things have gone downhill. And attendance, looking back in 2018, 222, 224 in '03, and 117 this year. We need to figure out what happened. And I can certainly understand no program in 2020 because of COVID-19, but we started running in a deficit in 2019. And then around the same deficit that we had in 2021.
Right. I think, and if you look to the camp supplies in 20, I'm seeing I'm reading this right, 2018, supplies were 6,600. And then 2019, 27,000. 2021, 20,000. 2022, 31,000. I'm not quite sure why the supplies would go from 60, what did I say? 6,700 to 27,000 to 20,000 to 31,000 to 21,000. And then in 2024, down to $1,600. There's just something not okay in that chart. Not, not, not our staff. I'm saying with what was being done with the money there. That's a very inconsistent line.
So in 2019, there were a lot of purchases that were made that started to change the camp because I asked the same question when I was reviewing the finances. because I asked the same question when I was reviewing the finances. So a lot of it then turned into the program, as you all know, had changed dramatically. It started as a sports program and it slowly grew in popularity and became more of an all-day type of program. And so at that point in time, they bought Nintendo Switches, TVs, um, they bought Chromebooks, they bought other types of items that were more higher-priced items in addition to the large inflatable slide, the bouncy house, the, some of the run-of-the-mill, uh, other types of things, uh, soccer nets, um, foosball tables, things of that nature. So those higher-priced items are, start in the 2019 timeframe. And then when you see the jump, it's when something broke. So, um, one of the, one year, the slide broke. So you'll see that the slide, where they purchased another slide, um, in one of the other fiscal, I think it was 2022. But you'll see that that's kind of the bigger items when you look at the expense line items. Yes, so 2021. And 2022.
And the payroll also like started out in seventy-seven thousand. In 2022, it's ninety-three thousand. Then 2023, it's a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand.
So we also got a ruling from council in regards to the program in 2022 that it could not be classified as a program and it was in fact deemed a camp. So KP Law provided us an opinion and said that they needed to go through the proper licensure. So one of the reasons that payroll is a direct correlation is that there's certain staffing, um, that needs to be put in place for a ratio per, um, child. So there's only so many children to be assigned to a counselor who then has a CIT. So all of that kind of enhances the more children you have. So if you're not adjusting your program, you're not adjusting your fees, you're not adjusting all of those other things, it's going to kind of unravel on you. So it was not, it could have been managed better if those changes were to have been made when they recognized that they were, that where they priced for other ones, how, what was their, you know, their registration ratio to, to counselors and things of that nature. So that all ties into the payroll.
So if we shortened the program day, would that take us out of that higher designation as a camp?
Uh, ours does have, um, something to do with the thresholds. Um, I'm not sure if that's the only one, but it could be very much so.
Right, because I mean, this started as like a town, um, go to your local elementary school and play for a while with, you know, kids you know and other children. And then it grew into really an extended daycare. You could drop your child off early, you could pick them up, I think as late as five at night. And that's a camp. I just wonder if we scaled it back and made a bridge year. But I keep thinking of the fact that we just built this beautiful new campus that has everything, gymnasiums, art rooms, music rooms, state-of-the-art auditorium for, for shows and movies. If Penn Tucket's going to offer a wide array of activities there, why would you send your child for three or four hours to Bagnell when they could be at this state-of-the-art facility? I don't want to compete with Penn Tucket. I just, that's why I'm kind of curious, what, what are they going to offer? And are they restricting it to Penn Tucket so that our kids could definitely get in?
I'm not sure if they're just restricting it to Penn Tucket. That part I do not, I would need to do some research to figure out if there's any restrictions.
Okay. So what, what would, what would be the preference of the board tonight? Have to table it again and-
I, I, I would feel comfortable tableing that if we can find out more information about Penn Tucket. And then curious if it would be worth trying to find a, you know, um, put a posting out for a-
For a person, yeah.
You know, a recreational-
A qualified recreation director, yeah, no, you-
Director of whatever, I mean.
Well, yeah.
You know, when I was a kid, I was driving cars out in the sand pits and doing good fun stuff. You can't do that nowadays, so.
No. Well, you can, but you're-
Sorry, Mike.
You might get caught. If it's brief, you can, you may if you'd like to. Go ahead. I mean, we're not, we're not overwhelmed here.
That's fine. We just- Last five minutes for sure.
Sure, go right ahead.
Patrick Molina, Seven Savory. I, everything that Rebecca says about the, you know, the program dynamics and the presentation, it's helpful information. Frankly, I can tell you, the Recreation Committee just saw this, this last week. So just a couple of days ago, this is all super new. I think there is, what's really clear from what everyone on the board is saying is that people are interested in something in some way, if it can work, if it's, if it's, uh, sustainable. And so what I think the board should, what the board should do, with all respect, is consult finance, consult recreation, put our heads together and see what we can do. It's, it's not even October yet. I mean, so it may well be that we try to do this stuff.
Kind of is October. But I catch it.
No, we're on the cusp, right. But it may well be that after we put our heads together, we say, no, we got to keep, we have to punt this to 2020, 2026. But I, I, I don't think there's any damage or harm in taking a good check out and see if we can put our heads collectively together. Just in this meeting alone, there's been some really good ideas that I hadn't thought of or, you know, were brand new to me. So, you know, I mean, I think if the left and the right hand get together and we put out a, see, see if we can find a, a qualified person to come forward. And I think that's kind of the linchpin. If we don't, we put something out and we can't really get anybody and, you know,
But we don't know-
Nobody can really get behind it.
We don't know what to put out yet, that's the problem.
Well, and that's, that's why we should consult with finance about who, you know, how much this program should cost, how much should these people be paid? What would be, what would a successful financial situation look like? Remember, I know, I know that this was a really super bare-bones year, but it made twenty grand. You know, I mean, so it was in the black this year, even though it was a very, very different program. Understood, people, people wouldn't have liked not having, not having the field trips and a bunch. But I can tell you, I know one parent whose daughter really enjoyed it, um, speaking to you right now. And, and so, I mean, there are, there are, there's more than one way to get through this and to keep a program around, but if we try and fail, at least we try. So my recommendation would be consult with finance, consult with rec. Take some public, take some public comments and, and see what everybody else does. Let's see if we can put something together. And if we can't, it's okay to punt it. You know, it very well may be that that's the, the best solution, but I don't think, you know, on October 1, we should be making that decision. That's all I think. Thanks so much, guys.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So when you say put our heads together, are you looking for a joint meeting? Or are you looking for each of the groups to go back to the drawing boards and then get together? What are you, what are you thinking?
I don't, I don't have a, a specific construct of the, the way the logistics has to work. I just want to make sure that people can get their ideas together. And so whatever, whatever mechanism is the most effective for putting, you know, putting people together, whether it be in a room or whether it be on a, you know, on a board that, you know, sends emails back to and forth to each other. I don't even know-
Okay, yeah, we can't, we can't. But, but-
Logistics, whatever.
What you can do is within each board, um, you can meet, brainstorm, come up with your best thoughts and considerations.
Sure.
The one thing I would say is that, um, I think trying is good. I, I'm very optimistic, I try at most, anything I think I can try at. But in this case, we have to be wary that we can't fail. Okay, so it has to be fa- pretty fail-safe to go forward.
Which is why finance-
It's not like we can just, you know, oh, hope it works. So I think what you saw with being in the black, the scaled back, possibly scale back hours so that somebody who has a summer availability would be willing to do it. But I think it was a lot of hours.
The finance board is not charged with oversight of the program.
No.
The finance board is charged with setting the budget for the town. While there is an impact to the town's budget through this, they have never looked at the finances, audited the finances or done anything in relation to that, nor is that in their mission under the bylaw. So I think that they can be part of the conversation, but I want to be very clear that they are not the finance body of the recreation program. It is ultimately the charge of the select board. It was established by the select board and town meeting established the revolving fund. So I think it's important to make sure that we understand everyone's role because the Recreation Committee had a softball group that was what the Recreation Committee focused on. They've developed a 501(c). It wasn't until two and a half years ago, when I tried to recruit other members to be part of the Recreation Committee and actually focus on recreation passive and both active, which I'm very happy to see that the group is doing. And I want to be very clear about the, the actual roles of each individual committee and encourage and support the idea of getting together and thinking things through, but very clear on whose responsibility it is and what role is advisory and what role is not.
Yes, I understand about finance, we, but we do need finance to recommend favorably if something were to get floated in front of the town meeting. So they have, they have to sign off on the financial side of it. So I know that recreation is an advisory on recreation activities. What I'm thinking is, I mean, we're coming up short on P, time and people to, to do research on this. That, that is the problem. I don't feel it's fair to have our town administrator go out and research all over the place about camps when we have like a million other, um, things on the list that she has to get done as well. Right, so I know you've done some research. So the question is, do we have, do we have the information on the West Newbury and on the Penn Tucket? I probably honestly haven't opened the packet yet, I have not had the chance.
I, I don't think we attack West Newbury yet.
No, but do we have their data like on their pricing and their salaries?
The pricing for their camp is on there.
Okay, but what about salary? Yeah, we, we need to know what we need to pay. Because it's, it's kind of, it would be, again, like a failed effort to post a job that nobody comes to.
Well, right. And I mean, you know, so the point, the point is, it's, it's a failed effort if, if it fails, right? If you set, if you set out a post and nobody comes and, and goes through it, no harm, no foul, we just can't, we just, you know, cancel like we were plan, like we're planning to cancel, right? You know, so it's, it's, there's no damage to trying to send out, uh, to, to seek a director because I think the director is the linchpin here.
But we don't know what to seek the director for. How many hours a day are you going to ask them? I mean, all of these-
You need somebody that's awfully flexible and awfully cares a lot about the town. So you need, you need a Mr. Day or somebody of that ilk. And so the, I think the first job is to see if there's somebody like that. And in a couple of weeks, we could probably try to identify whether there is somebody like that or not by, by, you know, making some inquiries. Do you have interest in potentially running a camp? We don't know exactly what it would-
I'm hesitant to say go around and ask people if they're interested because we, we have to post a proper position with, with proper qualifications required. And we, we have to define it with some type of hours. We can't just, the days are gone when you can do like, ask your neighbor, you know, if he can, wants to run the summer camp. We can't, we can't do that. So I think, I mean, tonight, I don't think the board is prepared to vote. And I think, I, I think your sincerity and your enthusiasm is good. But I think we need to still figure out, um, what we're able to do at this point in time.
Sure.
Because we can't just try and say, oh, we tried, we failed, okay, town meeting, bail them out again. And maybe then we're also asking for an override, you know, just, we can't, we can't intentionally go, go, you know, blindly into this like, okay, I hope it works. I think we have a model from the last year that might be serviceable, um, but we'd have to look at it. So that would mean, um, some of the board members would have to dig in on this as well. So if you want to see it go forward, you have to take some time and look into what we ran last year, how many hours was it, what did we pay? Can we do it again? Can, maybe we can limit the numbers of mem- of campers.
Can that information be shared amongst the, amongst the boards and, and maybe that would-
Information can always be shared between parties. We just can't involve discussions that might, um, because that's the problem. You, you don't intentionally do it, but, you know, you send this to one person, they talk to another person, that person talks to a third, suddenly a quorum of a board is discussing something and nobody really meant for that to happen.
Right.
So I want to be careful about that. I think, um, for me, looking at this tonight, um, the camp back in the day, it sounded like Grandma Moses, but back in the day, it, it, it brought funds back to Bagnell, which was fantastic at a time when we didn't have it. And then, um, things have really, um-
It obviously needs oversight.
It's not, yeah, it's not just oversight, it's like, you know, for the salaries to go like from, in 2019, from eighty-eight thousand to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, it's a huge increase.
Without increasing, without increasing the price of camp.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I would need some more time to look at this and, yeah, figure it out that, why this happened. But I think that, you know, we have to be really, really careful not to end up in a deficit.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
So, and the, I, I think obviously motion to table is the best choice because I would also like to see what Becky would, you know, have her input to.
Yep, absolutely, we have one member not here tonight, yep. And, and if any members have time to do a little research, by all means, go. Yes, Mike Dempsey, you're recognized. The massive crowd out there.
So Mike Dempsey from the Conservation Commission. So I, I think as you're aware, the commission has had a camp at VZ Park successfully for the past ten years. And so what I would say is, anything else that the town does regarding running the camp, I really think we should put a request for proposals out and see if there are any other organizations interested in running a camp for us like we're doing at VZ Park. Because at VZ Park, as I say, they've been fini- the, the company that does it, they're doing it successfully, they're making money, they're paying the park to use the park and it's a win-win. It's a win for the kids that go there, my grandkids all go there, five of them went there this year. Fantastic, they're very happy with it. And so it would be a win for everybody. Like I say, I don't know if there's somebody out there, but it's at least worth doing an RFP to see if there's anybody else out there willing to take it on.
Okay, thank you. So a request for proposal or information, we don't want to lock in, right?
We wouldn't have to award a contract. We would put language in there that says that, um, the, um, the town, uh, reserves the right to refuse, um, any award based upon the best interest of the community. There's language, I can't think of the other.
So would we like to table right now or would you like to go ahead with seeing about a request for a proposal and then table or what? What's the pleasure of the board today? We're going to meet again in two weeks, so.
Is a, is a request for proposal necessary to get the information out there? I mean, we have one group that does it already. Mike could easily contact them and, and get their opinion.
I guess I don't understand the question.
He's wondering if it's necessary to do a request for proposal if we're looking to find somebody who wants to come in and run the camp for us.
Yeah, because we're not, we're not paying them directly, we're not-
So you would have to do an RP if it was to utilize the, the property? You couldn't just select anyone that you wanted to and allow them to use your property?
So, yeah, request for proposal. So what would you, what's the temperature of the board tonight?
Doesn't do any harm to do an RFP.
Okay, do you think that's doable at this juncture?
I can do that.
I know you can do it. It goes on the, but is it, is it reasonable for us to ask you to do it at this juncture?
As I've said from the beginning, it is the select board's decision. If you would like to explore that option, then we can explore that option and I would be happy to put something together.
Okay, would you like a vote of the board on that?
If you so choose.
Make a motion that we do an RFP, find somebody interested in running the summer program at, um, Bagnell School.
Okay, any more discussion? There be none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, now, motion to table? Well, we've kind of addressed it, so we don't need to really table, but we haven't really.
I don't know, do we have to table?
Well, we don't really need, we're going to roll this forward to the next meeting.
We'll be on the agenda next meeting.
Okay, so we're moving on. And next on our agenda, I believe, is, da-da-da, just a second. Here we go. Oh, we have to approve the warrant for the November 5th, 2024 election. And I think the town clerk sent us some small changes to the one that was in the packet, right?
The one that was included in the packet does not have the small changes. This one does, they're all typos and they were submitted by the Secretary of State.
Okay, so do we have-
With the motion, we approve the warrant for the November 5th, 2024 state election.
As submitted by the town clerk? As submitted by the town clerk and approved by the state. Okay, any second on that?
Second.
Any more discussion? There be none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, and FY25, Town Administrator Goals. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. And Rebecca, do you want to discuss at all the goals, or?
Sure, I mean, I can give you a quick rundown for the record.
Sure, thank you.
As we did for the last fiscal year, I tried to take the approach of putting it into categories so that we could focus on different areas of municipal operation. So the first one was civic engagement and community outreach. We took a lot of time and effort last fiscal year to try and enhance the website and provide more information, such as the project page, just in general, for many of the grants and other opportunities that we've been working on. So this year, it was to, again, foster a media presence on social media. It seems to be the platform that most people use. Whatever we put up there gets shared on the crier, which can be helpful and hurtful at the same time. But if there's a way that we can try and find a balance of getting the information out there and making sure people know that if there's any questions and things of that nature, that they can reach out to us here at Town Hall, and we'd be happy to answer them. So trying to figure out how we can foster that community engagement. Additionally, to develop a comprehensive plan for the town's 175th anniversary parade and celebration. That was something that we had discussed with Tracy when he first came before the board and was unable to continue on with that. But we've established a good group of volunteers that participate with Groveland Day, as well as Pumpkin Fest and some other community events.
Fantastic.
And they're all willing to pitch in, and I'd like to help support that effort as much as I possibly can and see that be a success. From a human resource standpoint, I'd like to boost up our employee training. We've never really had employee training, so there's a lot of different trainings that we could potentially offer our staff here. There was another department who had actually brought up shooting drills and things of that nature. Unfortunately, due to the circumstances that we find ourselves in, sometimes that can be relevant, especially when we're dealing with some arrate residents about certain things that have occurred. So things of that nature, including other standard trainings, such as harassment prevention, conflict resolution, and mediation, and ethics. I'd also like to streamline the human resource filing system. Currently, the way things are set up here in Town Hall is that everyone used to kind of work in a bubble, and so we're trying to change that and kind of centralize the way that we, that we operate, so that the departments can focus on their direct mission and not necessarily be burdened with all of the extra things that, that come into making sure that we're in compliance with work and labor laws. So we have different departments that have different personnel files that are not necessarily supposed to be in their office. It's supposed to be centralized. You have query checks, you have score checks, you have all these different things that need to be done properly. So I would like to focus on streamlining the filing system and standardizing that procedure. From the departments, I'd like to continue the work that we have been doing with collaboration and communication. We have bimonthly meetings with the staff, and then we also, or together as a team, and then we also have on the off months more individual meetings with the departments where we can focus more on things that are more pertinent to their operation, that might not be really relevant to somebody else in the larger group. But we are all still communicating, and I would like to continue to allow departments to share projects and responsibilities and make projects more comprehensive in nature, because there's a lot of overlap with what we do. And, you know, we all play a role in trying to accomplish our goals. So I think it's important for us to continue to have that communication and trying to figure out how we do that. I also would like to try and get some more employee feedback on things that we have changed and things that they would like to see. So I'd like to do, I'm not sure if it's an employee feedback like box or something, but I know that that's been something that's historically been done, but maybe a little bit more modernized in seeing how we could do that and allow for departments to be more engaged. With the select board, we, it was a goal of mine for last year, that I'd really like to update some of your forms. Some of them are very old, or we don't have forms, like your liquor license. We don't have a form here in Groveland. We have a one-day liquor license, but we don't have like a liquor license actual application. So taking a look at some of your applications and bringing them up to date is something that I'd like to do. And also, as you'll see on the agenda, we decided to move forward with the project list that we had talked about. So that's also a goal that I'd like to refine more specifically, as you'll see and we'll talk about later, is how that's organized and how that information is shared with the select board and how they can interact with that data and be more informed about what departments are working on. So if you do look at the Newbury Port Daily News and say, oh, well, you know, West Newbury just got awarded this grant, how come we haven't? Maybe if you look on the list, you might say, oh, no, they're working towards that, or this is something that, you know, that they already received last year and they've been carrying through, just to make sure that the board is more aware. For grounds and open space maintenance and improvement, again, I'd like to work with the new projects and programs manager and the public grounds and facility supervisor in developing a building grounds and open space maintenance and improvement plan. We have all these great areas, but we don't necessarily have plans to upkeep and for future maintenance and how they're utilized. So getting that into a more organized format, I think, would be very helpful. Additionally, I would like to partner with the projects and programs manager and the Groveland Electric Light General Manager to create a tree maintenance plan and pursue a designation as a tree city. I know that is something that was talked about when the former superintendent was in his role, and so we would like to continue on with that path. We have made some progress with applying for a grant for a general review of the trees, and then also working with Mike Dempsey and the CPC and his team to figure out exactly how we could go about becoming a tree city designation, so that we can open up some funding sources as well. So for budget and finance, we were successful in passing and promoting the fiscal policy, financial policy. And so I would like to see if we can try and meet some of those goals that we had put forward as part of that policy and some of those thresholds in some of our accounts. And then from a procurement standpoint, I'd like to develop a procurement policy. We really don't have anything in place right now, and that can always be very troublesome with certain departments as to when they need to have my office involved, when it hits certain thresholds, what thresholds require certain advertisement, whether or not it needs to be in the newspaper, things of that nature, specifications, all that stuff. And that includes simple supply purchases. If we hit a threshold by three different departments ordering from one place, that's still a violation of procurement laws if we have not procured those services soundly. So we need to make sure that when we're purchasing, we're purchasing as the town of Groveland. So just because the town administrator's office and the town planner's office bought something for different needs, if the amount adds up, that could be a problem. So we need to be mindful of that and trying to streamline and centralize that type of process and make sure that the departments are aware. That's what I've outlined for you for fiscal year '25.
Okay. If anybody has questions on these goals, we would need to unvote these, because these will be used for the next evaluation cycle. I mean, they're worthy, very worthy goals.
And I'll make a motion that we accept these goals from our town administrator.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the goals as outlined? Thank you, it's unanimous, one absent. Okay, next, evidently, we have goals. No, we've talked about this, but we never really, we've had so many hills to climb. I think maybe now our town administration does most, most of the things for us, yay, maybe we can look into. I know Slockman Watson mentioned it many times, that we just have the one Comcast choice in town. We don't really have a choice. It's Comcast or nothing. So, you know, for the course of this next fiscal year, if we could try to see what other towns have been able to find, maybe we could get someone else to come in here. This Breeze Line, I guess they keep changing their name, they were Atlantic Broadband. Now they're Breeze Line. Next week, they might be something else, but they just, I think the problem with going off of cable is, for the, for the young, young adults, it's not a problem. They're very savvy, and they know, yes, okay, they're like, they stream, they do this, they do that. But for the older adults and those in the middle of the older, getting toward older, you kind of want to have something that you can rely on to get access to television that you want to see. So the idea would be a streaming service, I would think, would probably bundle some of the streaming things that you would pay for. So instead of cable, you'd have a bundle, I don't know. That's my guess. I'm not really sure.
I got plain basic cable, so I don't, I don't do any of that.
No, but you know what I'm saying? Like, your choices, if you detach from the cable, you're on your own. You have to go and buy the service. I think one of these companies might organize those services, so that if you wanted to purchase a bundle from them, you could. That's my guess. Do you think it's worthy of us trying to look into it during the year? Okay. The one, on item two, you're probably surprised, but it says, "Support a balanced budget that provides residents with the best level of services without an override." I felt very strongly last year, and I still do want to keep going and not have to push overrides through, but I know it's not always within our control, that if we get an assessment that gets voted, that we have to allow the voters to tell us yes or no. We can't not vote on it, or else it passes by us not acting on. So I didn't know if you wanted to put "without an override" or "for," I thought a better wording might be "with the best level of services and keep the town affordable," because I feel like that's one of the things that drew us into the town, was it was affordable. I mean, I know right now, housing prices are not, I get that, but tax-wise, we're still not as high up as other towns. I think it's still affordable. But if you want to leave those words in, we can. It's up to you. That's goal number two. If you don't care one way, we can leave it. We can strive for it. We're working on the trash and recycling contract that will continue this year, and it doesn't, the current contract doesn't expire until 2026. So that's an ongoing. And we did adopt the policies and procedures, I think, a few meetings ago, so we're kind of in line to promote the civil discourse and debate. And I don't know why we're in charge of the Salem Street Dam, but if you think we should be.
Well, I have some good news about the Salem Street Dam as well, that I can report and tell-
Okay, then we'll be in charge of it, so we can take credit for it. So we'll keep going. Road repairs, and we just hired a new program and project manager, and we will, he already came and updated us on the road maintenance. He talked about the other things, the crosswalks and all. So I think we're going to be hearing more from him. The regional agreement, we worked on that the last meeting. The financial policies, our accountant has, and our town administrator presented those to us, and we voted on them, and then the accountant gave us a really great update on those and on our progress towards them, which is very good. So for the most part, these goals are all achievable, as long as we have good news about the dam. That's, that's why I look at it. What do you think? Do you want to adopt them or not?
Yes.
These were 23, so this will be 24, 25, then? Is that, we're just going to roll them? Yes? Yes, Ed?
On the number five, I thought I got information that was sent to me this week, that the state come up with the money to support that dam. I think if I remember, it was, it was close to $100,000 that we received for that.
I think the town administrator said under her update to us, she's going to give us some good news. That might be it. You just ruined the good surprise, but that's okay. We can still hear good news more than once. But do you want that as a goal for this year, that we're going to, we're going to make progress on this? I've given up-
Well, we can ask her now if, for the-
Well, I think, I think, why don't we wait till let her give us the full update of her things?
I can do it now. So we received the dams and seawall grant that we applied for, so we received $98,000 for design and permitting for the Salem Street Dam.
Yes, but what's, what's the expected cost to fix this?
That is what this $98,000 will tell us. It'll give us an estimate, it'll give us construction documents, and will also take us through the entire permitting case. So you're talking about a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, the Williams Protection Act, National Heritage for Endangered Species, you have the special permitting for the dam itself. So there's a lot of different permitting. I think the Army Corp. engineers might be involved as well. So there's an extensive amount of permitting that we need to go through in order to-
Yes, it's complex.
-be able to move forward with construction. So that's the $98,000.
All right. I think it'd be interesting at some point to get some pictures, because I, myself, I was surprised when I saw this dam, as to what it actually is. So, Mark will get us some pictures of this thing, one way or the other. Okay, would we like to just roll these forward to 24, 25, or do you wish to add anything or take anything out? I think everything here is kind of ongoing still.
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, so make a motion to roll it forward, then.
I'll make a motion to roll the selectmen goals for 2024 to 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? There be none, all in favor? Unanimous with one absent. Okay. Back to our agenda. And we are up to, we're not, we've actually made good progress tonight. We are up to townwide project list.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table that until we get a readable copy. Table it to the next meeting, that defy anybody to read any of this paperwork yet.
Oh, well, I get it digital, so I could read it.
I did send it digitally.
I'd like to table it until we can get a copy that we can read.
Okay. So you're finding your printed copy, the font was not adequate for you?
Yeah, it is small.
Tiny.
I looked at it on my phone. I can't.
Okay.
So it's hard to put in, like, because it's so extensive, it's hard to print it out unless we did multiple, like, pages. I can try and do that and eliminate the information, but I did send it in an Excel format online, so if you click the other Excel document, you could go cell by cell without having to do that. I can definitely prepare it for next time to have that in the-
Right. What I, you know what I would suggest? If, I think, because it's Excel, you should be able to do it, is to take the first three columns, the title, description, priority, and progress, those four columns? If you could fit those on one page, and then hide those columns, and drag the others over next to the projects to show next steps, date added category. And then the notes might need to be a separate page, again, with the first line. I think that's the only way you're going to get this.
Only on a paper format. I can, like I said, I'll manipulate the cells, I'll remove some of the columns, and I'll make it that way. But that is why I provided you a digital copy in Excel, so that you could scroll through that.
Right.
So I didn't expect you to just read it on the paper. But yes, that'll be done for next month.
Okay, so we don't want it to show on the board or anything? Nope?
You made a motion to table, so we'll just-
Did you second it?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, table it in?
Till next week.
All right, I'll go with you. It's unanimous, but I don't agree. If you want, I could try and just do it for you. I don't want you to have to sit there doing this forever.
No, it was supposed to be a tool, so I need to make sure it's better.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Oh, the Merrimack Select Board's letter to the governor regarding cuts to the transportation for the Penticat Regional Schools. So this is the cuts for this year they're talking about in their letter? Cuts to this year's transportation or next year?
The letter was the only thing that was sent to me, so-
So we don't really know?
For you.
Okay.
Kind of makes it sound for next year, right? Because it says-
I don't know. I'm just getting to it.
$500,000 for 2025.
This is two, this is fiscal 2025, though.
Oh, with a, um-
Yeah, I know, that's, that's-
That's true, right?
That's the confusing part about all this stuff. We're always like, what year are we in? Feel like, I'm like, what year? What week is it? Week one or week two? Flip a coin. Sometimes, you know, when we're talking, like, when the trash contract is going to go, we, we can spend quite a bit of time. I'm just looking for the letter so I can get to it quicker. I tried to cut up this agenda a little bit. Shoot. Just, was it in the whole, in the big packet? Rebecca, was the letter in the big packet? Or was it attached?
It was in the big packet.
Okay, okay, I got it, I got it somewhere. It's just a... No, wait. I'm almost there. Maybe this is it. No. Hang on. This is the right agenda.
I'll display it on the shared...
Yeah. I'm going to find it probably by the time the meeting ends. There was just a lot of things. I tried to chop up the agenda a little bit to make it faster, but I just probably ended up making it worse. My concern with the letter is just that I agree that transportation for Penticat should be 100% funded. Regional transportation is always supposed to have been 100% funded, but the other aspects of the letter, I'm not... So talking about fiscal 2025, which is the year we're in right now, and... But he says, "The reality is, we won't even receive the $507,000, as the state rarely provides the full amount listed in the cherry sheet." So that, I'm not... I'm not aware of that as a fact. You know? But what they put on the cherry sheet, we don't get. I'm not aware of that as a fact. I am aware that we're in that "hold harmless" status, which means we get just a certain amount of increase per student. The "hold harmless," I guess, is meant for towns where they don't think you really need any more money, but they give you something. And the net school spending comparing... A comparison of us to Lawrence, I believe, I just don't find that as something that I know a lot about, so I'd have to look that up to understand that. I guess the question was, did we want to just sign this letter? So I just... You know, over the years, I've probably spent more time than I should have on this. And what I did was, I wrote up a little... It's a bigger font. Pass one to Ed. So I'll just read you my... These are just my thoughts about if they're cutting the transportation. From the DESI website, it stated that "regionalization is a political, economic, and educational marriage that fulfills a constitutional responsibility to educate children in public schools. It's not an easy path. It is a process that demands goodwill, compromise, and dedication. More importantly, the process demands the trust of everyone involved, albeit a citizen, a parent, or a political leader." And this is on the DESI site. And they also have a pathway to regionalization, so they're still promoting the concept of regionalization. "It's a cooperative document developed by the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, under the sponsorship of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The document's purpose is to provide a workable guide for communities who are developing or modifying a regional school district." So my point in my statement simply is that the regionalization is not only supported by DESI, but encouraged, and inherent in any group of towns that decides to regional is inherent in that model is the understanding that your transportation costs will increase, because now you're moving children across towns. We bus children over to West Newbury or Merrimack if we have a cohort of a special education program there, and vice versa. So it's a very cornerstone of regionalization is the reimbursement for the increased transportation cost that a regional school district will incur. Students don't tend to walk to their regional school. They don't walk to the middle and high school. They all get bused there. You know, I walked to my high school. City high schools you can walk to, not regionals. So they are supposed to fund this. And my opinion, in my statement, is the state is negligent in its commitment to regionalization as it's promoting it on the site, and then it's not fulfilling the promise of funding the transportation. That I'm solidly behind. A statement to that effect, yes. And I think the wealth factor of a regional school district should have little to no impact on the reimbursement for transportation. It doesn't matter what your house value are, as your kid needs to be transported to a regional middle and high school. The value of your home should not be a factor, because regionalization saves money in the long run. And then my second finding, this is something that I worked on a couple summers ago, and I'll bring it up again. I don't know about the net school spending. I'd have to ask the Merrimack Select Board member more about that, but I do know that the foundation budget is calculated for an entire school district. However, when they go to calculate the minimum required contribution, they treat each of our towns as if it were its own school district. Okay? That'd be like going into Haverhill and treating Bradford as one wealthy part of the community and saying, "You need to pay more." Going downtown to the other street where there's lower-valued homes and less income and saying, "Okay, you need to pay less." We need to be considered as one city or town, and therefore, the minimum contribution should be determined for the entire district, not for each town. Determine it for the district, and then let the district allocate it per pupil to each town. And I kind of took a run, like a really roughing out of that, using the Newbury Port model. I substituted our numbers, and I do find that I think we might benefit and get additional Chapter 70. They don't do regional school districts properly in their formula, and they never have. The formula was designed for a standalone city-school district. And part of me wonders is part of the reason of the change in methodology to, once again, move money away from regional school districts and into the city schools, because this formula benefits them and harms us. And I don't know... That's why I don't know about signing the Merrimack letter, because I don't know enough about net school spending. It's not something that I studied a lot. I do know regional transportation should be reimbursed, so I don't know what everyone wants to do about... I think the letter is a really great effort, but I don't sign a letter that I don't understand everything in it. So we got this, I guess, during the week it was sent over to ask if we wanted to join forces. I mean, my question is, do you know... Are you aware, Rebecca, are we receiving a cut in our expectation, what the budget was based on for transportation? The 507?
I'm not aware, but that doesn't mean that there isn't.
Okay, so again, I guess I could look into it some more before our next meeting. Yes, Ed?
Maybe Rebecca knows... Is Merrimack looking for us to support this, or are they just sending us so that they're aware of it?
They sent it to West Newbury and Groveland, and they asked whether or not we would like to sign on. If we'd like to sign on, they will adjust the letter and allow for a location for us to sign.
I'll make a motion that we approve and support Merrimack's letter going to the governor. It seems like it's reasonable to me. Makes sense.
What do you think of the net school spending?
What's that?
What is your take on the net school spending? Comparison to Lawrence?
I don't know if I have a comment on that.
Well, that's my... I guess I like... The letter is a nice effort, but again, it doesn't address the whole issue that the formula completely ignores the fact that we are a region. They treat us like three towns.
Would we like to send this to them, to Merrimack, to see if they agree with what you've got stated here, and see if they would want to...
I would like that. I would like that. I mean, we haven't had a meeting of that group, but I would like them to consider adding to that letter.
Because you bring up a good point on that, so I wonder if they would want to add that into their letter and revise it, and then from that point, maybe sign on it.
What do you think, Jason?
I am concerned about that cut.
But we don't know there's a cut. That's what I just... That's the other thing. Let's make sure we know what we're talking about.
Yes, I agree with that. Because I know our cherry sheet is 507, 422, like they said.
Yes.
For year 2025.
Right.
And I do remember some cuts coming down, but I don't know what that would impact was going to be to transportation.
Well, it says, "The state rarely provides the full amount listed on the cherry sheet." So I was surprised by that, because I thought the cherry sheet, it comes out so late now. I mean, they don't settle the budget until, what, September? Right? Well after a town meeting's done. And that's when the cherry sheet comes out, right?
Cherry sheet usually comes out in the late, like the preliminary...
Oh, you think it's March? More like March?
So it first goes through the governor's proposal, then it goes to the legislature, then it goes to the Senate, then it goes to conference, and then it goes to the final final. So it goes through the budget process. So you don't get the final numbers usually until June, but you get your preliminary numbers in the December timeframe, and then you have the House debate, and then they usually increase it or decrease it. And then again, it goes to Senate, and then it goes to conference. So yes, the final numbers are usually not until the June timeframe, when they vote and sign the budget.
Okay, and then we use the cherry sheet when we set our tax rate?
Yes, we do. And we use the estimated revenue from what we're seeing in the cherry sheet, trying to make the best estimate based upon what was proposed and what the discussion is at the State House.
Okay.
But then if it's not accurate, then many communities will have a fall town meeting in order to adjust their budgets to reflect the actual revenue that was projected or that was approved by the state. So that is something that happens.
So, but now it's October... Well, tomorrow's October. Is this number for transportation already set?
For fiscal year '25, yes. For fiscal year '25, it was signed and approved for $507,422. How it gets expended out of that and how we receive that from the state, I'm not certain, because that money... I would need to do more research on how that money comes through, at what point, how that's reimbursed, how that... I don't know that process. It's not on the town side that I would see that.
I'm looking at the first sentence. He's talking about almost a $300,000 cut to that, and I don't know where that information is coming from. So I guess we can look into finding that out?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay. If we want to send this over, send it over and just say, "Consider this." I just think comparing us to Lawrence and saying it's not fair, I'd rather compare us to a Georgetown or a Newbury Port and say, "It's not fair." Because the way they split us into three towns after they do a foundation budget for one regional school. Treat us like one school district, just like you do Newbury Port, Georgetown, everybody else. So I can trim this down and out and make it a little more succinct.
And I can take a closer look as well, because I had not. So this could be a cut from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 as well, the 293.
Yeah, I just... I'm not sure. Yeah, I'd like to look at the cherry sheets and see.
So I'd have to take a look at the numbers first in order to give you that information, and then we can do additional research and get the other questions that you had.
So could we do a motion to table until next meeting? And reach out to Merrimack with some of this, and we'll check the facts? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think it'd be very important to check the facts.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, yeah, I agree with the letter, but I just... I feel they might want to read this and maybe adjust their letter.
And I would like to check the facts and make sure what we're talking about, if we're getting a cut or not getting a cut for the year they're wearing right now, because that's concerning. So motion to table?
He's got a motion already out there. That's the other...
Nope.
It wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded. We were getting there, but we didn't get there.
All right, so then a motion to table to...
Yes, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of tabling? Okay. All right, so what is that? This is two. Okay, so now we have the minutes. Has everybody this time had time to finish the minutes? We have minutes from... We'll start with September 4th, 2024, and go backwards. The order they are on the agenda, if you had a chance to review. I'm just trying to remember if everybody was here.
Yeah, these are from last meeting.
Yeah, so we hadn't... Yep, you didn't have them. So are we all set with these?
Yep.
Okay, well, I need a motion for September 4th, 2024. Or if you want to do all three at once, that's fine as well.
I just wanted to make sure if we were all there before we do.
I didn't see any absences.
I don't think anybody was away.
I can't remember.
August and... Well, September 4th, definitely I was back, because I had to go to work, and August as well. Does everybody think they were in attendance?
Yep. All right, we're good.
Okay, let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 4th, 2024, August 19th, 2024, and August 5th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous? Any older unfinished business? There be none? Do you have any items not reasonably anticipated? None? And now it's town administrator time.
So I have a couple of updates from Town Hall Operations. We continue to finalize the FY '26 budget schedule, updating the capital improvement plan, and we had our first meeting for the tax recap group to review the schedule and deadlines. I also wanted to update the board for Vision Zero, which is a roadway safety strategy that aims to eliminate severe injury and fatal crashes on roadways. Essentially, it's an attempt to design our transportation system to accommodate certain types and levels of human mistakes and avoid serious injuries when a crash occurs. This is being done by the MVPC, who is awarded a Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant to create a Vision Zero Plan, and this will support the region with strategies to create an equitable, safe, and multi-module transportation network. And as you'll see, there's a link, and I'll also send that to you in your email so that you'll be able to review the draft plan. For the next meeting, I just wanted to alert the board that we will have a presentation from our neighbor's table. They had reached out to the chair, and they wanted to speak a little bit more about food security and some of the work that they do with the Groveland Council on Aging. For residential concerns, I had none that came through my office. For field use, property use, and special event permits, I had none that came through. For some important dates for a community perspective, October 5th, the Pines Speedway reunion, Pumpkin Fest will be held on October 16th from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. At the Pines Recreation Area, the rain date will be October 17th. The Planning Board hearing is scheduled for October 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Meeting Room, and that's to hear the 181 rear school subdivision. That's, again, to alert you, we will be closed at Town Hall on October 14th in observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day, so we will be moving our meeting to October 15th, which is why we will be in the main reading room, and they will be over at the Public Safety Meeting Room. For grants, I wanted to alert the board that we received an FY '25 municipal road safety grant. This was received by the Police Department, and this is in the total of $13,556. As we spoke about, we also received the dam and seawall program grant for $98,620 for the repair of Johnson's Creek Dam, specifically design and permitting. And not on this sheet, I did just receive notification that we will receive funding or that the state will be funding the repaving of Route 97 for the stretch that we just had the sidewalks put in. So we're really excited that they have deemed that a worthy product, project, and will be moving forward with that. For procurement, I wanted to let the board know that we have put out the bid for the Shanahan parking lot, as well as the Pines. We did a combined procurement IFB like we had discussed. That is set to run on October 2nd, and the Central Register, the Eagle Tribune combines, and it will be placed here in Town Hall. The bid documents will be available on the 2nd online on our website or physically here in Town Hall, if somebody would like to come and view them. The pre-bid site visit will be held on October 8th, and that will be at 9:00 for Shanahan and 10:00 for the Pines, and the bid opening is scheduled for October 16th at 10:00 a.m. For technical review conferences, none were held. However, please note that we have a TRC scheduled for October 3rd for 102 King Street to discuss the proposal for a subdivision. Minutes from that meeting will be made available to the board at your next meeting. From community preservation projects, for the tennis pickleball courts, we have received a quote and are moving forward with the installation of the modular tile surface. The actual cost came in below what we had anticipated, first upon other vendors who have provided some quotes. This will actually be a better financial position for the town as well, because it comes with a 15-year warranty, and the installer will provide replacement tiles so that we can replace them if needed. So once we finalize all the details, we will provide the board with a timeline as to when they will move forward with this project. For meetings, events, and seminars, I have them listed below. If there's anything you'd like to hear more information about, please let me know. If there's anything you'd like to hear more information about, please let me know. But the one that I did want to highlight is that we did have our Whittier Working Group meeting that was held over in West Newbury. So we discussed the Whittier and NACO Northern Essex Community College project page that was put forward. I sent you an email as well with all of that information, so you have access to all the links and materials that they are sharing with the public. They offer several ways to engage with the project, from online survey and listening sessions. So that information is listed there as well. And they also reported that the Massachusetts School Building Authority recently visited campus and expressed interest in learning more about the model that they're putting together. So in terms of the group and the regional agreement, the city of Havel remains hesitant to move forward in reopening the agreement at this point in time. We explored the possibility of mending only smaller items, focusing on proposals that fall outside the capital assessment to address additional concerns such as the allocation. Still, we had not met a resolution. West Newbury had suggested drafting a letter to the state legislature, which was a recommendation they received from Senator Tarr's office. So I will share that letter with you as well. And then the UMass Donahue Institute, in collaboration with the Northern Essex Community College and Whittier Tech, are going to assemble some of the enrollment and assessment data and look at an analysis to explore various scenarios in terms of future costs to the community if this was to move forward. So the group will reconvene in November.
You've been busy. Thank you. That was a great update. Fantastic. Does anybody have any questions? We are very well informed. Now it's time for Select Board time and reports. Ed, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mark?
Nope.
Jason?
Not this week.
Not this week? Maybe next week. Yeah, I don't have anything in particular. It's just we've had some really nice weather, so hopefully enjoy it. We mean to have it forever. Under correspondence, I asked the town administrator to add the correspondence from the Quick Auto on the corner of Washington and Salem, because there had been a complaint on that, and we had approved additional parking. So I thought you should review that, and it might potentially be on our next agenda if there's something that we need to do or not do. If there's nothing we need to do, it won't be on the agenda. But if... And also, if you feel strongly about, if you see something that concerns you, please reach out to the town administrator and let her know you do want it on the agenda. Other than that, I believe we've completed the meeting. The only thing I would ask is, let's put a deadline on the evaluation for our town administrator, because I know Jason is waiting to do the report.
Mark said he was going to drop his off here at the Town Hall tomorrow.
This is a hard copy, if anybody needs one?
I left it at home.
Do you have everything you need? Because this is the reflection, and this is all the forms.
No, I got it all. I just...
You sure you have it all together in one spot? Okay. Because I know sometimes I lose things.
When the evaluation's done, by when?
By our next meeting, please.
Excuse me?
By the next meeting? Or do you want to...
When can you drop it off here at Town Hall?
When?
Yep.
When then, no?
Well...
What are you going to have it done?
For the next meeting.
Okay. So if we want... Do we want Jason to have it ready for us at the next meeting? Then I would say it needs to be here to Jason through some mechanism by... What's today? The 30th, right? So by a week from today, have it to Jason. So what's that? The 7th or the... What am I looking at? I'm looking at my calendar here. So just to keep... Because to give him time to get the report done... Yeah. So by October 7th, have it to Jason. Either drop it here or...
Yeah. Best is just to drop it at Annie so I can grab it from her.
Okay. October 7th.
That way it won't be left in my mailbox.
Yep.
She'll be able to set it aside.
You want them where, Jason? I'm sorry?
Give it to Annie. She'll be able to secure them.
Yes. Okay. And we'll reach out to Rebecca and let her know. Rebecca, let her know. Right?